Hello, I believe we're on, sorry for the delay, there were some technical difficulties, but I think we got it done. Again, thank you for joining me, my name is J C Lopez, people that don't know me that here for the first time. We have a called, uh, it used to be called Lobo Chat with J C Lopez. But I'm gonna, we renamed it, it's called The Chat with J C Lopez. So that way we can go ahead and explore and talk about different, um, uh, different, uh, items or what you want to call it. Anyway, I got a great guest today. Um, our previous county commissioner, uh, now he's gonna be running for the, the house. Art De La Cruz, one of my good friends in this world that I consider a good friend. Art, welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you, J C, it's an absolute pleasure to be here with you and your viewers and listeners.
Thank you, Art, thank you, thank you. Uh, we were talking a bit earlier about your history of you, you know, and how long you've been here in Albuquerque, da, da, da. And you share me again this story about your father, when your father came here and you, you know, when your mom, they met out here and he was traveling to go to California from Mexico. Explain that, share that story with the, with the, with the fans.
I appreciate that, yes, my dad was an immigrant, my mom was native Mexican. On his way to California, he stopped in Albuquerque, uh, Penilas basically, and he would spend nights under the Barelas Bridge. And so he started working at a little popular restaurant that's still there today, the Al Modello. And that's where it started, met my mom at a dance and here I am.
Wow, wow, and you say that, uh, when he came across, he lived under the bridge, I mean, that's when him and buddies where he came in the.
J C, you want to talk about humble beginnings.
Wow.
It doesn't start any more humble than that, when you're, you know, your father's trying to survive, that, yeah.
And how old was your father when he came?
He's about eighteen years old, around nineteen forty-three, it's a long, it's just a little while back.
Yeah, yeah, uh, I, I'm taking, I'm sure he'd be still lively, passed on or?
No, I wish I had my parents, I don't have either, J C, yeah.
Yeah, sad, you know, same here, you know, we all grow, huh, you know, so that's the cycle of life, no?
Right, right.
Um, so when you, uh, so they settled, uh, I guess, when they married, and you're, uh, you're, you have eleven brothers and sisters?
I do, my mom and dad, you know, they met at a dance in Alameda, my mom was an Alameda girl. I still have family in Alameda. Uh, then they, they rented a little house in, in a place that no longer exists. If you're familiar with Hispanic Cultural Center, there was a community there once upon a time, it was called Tortilla Flats.
Yeah, Barelas, that's where my grandma lived, I know, you're right, yeah.
That was the vernacular, right, that's what they called it, and, uh, after a while, they bought some property about two and two and a half acres in the South Valley, and I was born in the South Valley, literally at home, J C. So when people ask me, Art, are you from the South Valley, that's, uh, very literal, yes.
Yeah, and when you say you were born at home, like a midwife, a midwife came in, I mean, that's what, back then, midwife?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
And, uh, what did, how did they heat you up, put you in the oven or anything, you know? I've heard the stories that people, when they put them in and they keep them warm.
I never got that detail, I'm sure they spanked me and I cried.
Sounds good, but that's, uh, that's pretty, and then when you, um, so he lived in Barelas there for a while, in the Tortilla Flats, and, uh, and I'll start with that, I remember that because my grandmother lived at the nineteen hundred block of Barelas. And, uh, and then it was, um, way back, we didn't know, I didn't know it was a poor area. I mean, we did, my grandma and them, I never saw them as poor, it's just a, well, we had dirt roads, the sewer line with, the sewer plank was right down the block. So the smell to me, that was like just an aroma, man, I never thought it'd be in the, the sewer, you know? So you get used to, you know, living, you know, in a place like that, you know?
Right, well, my, my parents and my older sisters lived there, I, I never got to experience that wonderful experience.
Of the smell.
But that being said, though, that, yeah, the Tortilla Flats was the poor of the poor.
Yeah, and I, I never realized until you think, growing up, then you realize, oh, that's what they did, you know, so. Then when they knocked it all down, that's when you kind of realize, oh, okay, you know? And, um, so then, but they moved there, then he bought some property, you said?
Yes, he bought about two and a half acres, built a humble little adobe house, and, uh, yeah, I was born in that little house.
Mm-hmm, when they're, you, you say you have eleven brothers and sisters, where are you in that?
I am number six, now, J C, imagine this, my mom and dad had five girls in a row. My dad thought he never was gonna have a, a boy, a, a man. And so when I was born and I was number six, I was quite a treat from my dad, I was like my dad's buddy.
So you're the first boy, interesting, uh, and how old was your dad when you were born?
Gosh, I'm not really sure, I haven't really thought about it.
Yeah, but you hung out with your dad, you remember hanging out with your dad a lot, yeah?
I was, I was my dad's guy, I was with him everywhere, everywhere he went, he took me. I think my sisters were a little jealous, so.
Out of the eleven, how many were, um, boys?
So we had a total of four boys and the rest were girls.
Hmm, so you, you have four younger brothers, three younger brothers right now, yeah, and what do they do here in town?
Well, no, they don't live here, one of them passed away. Yeah, I'm sorry, two of them passed away and one of them lives in Austin.
Interesting, uh, so you're the, you're the one that carries the name here, De La Cruz. So, you know, I got to know you a few years back when you were the, the head of the parks, uh, in, uh, Burlington County Parks Director, Parks or?
That's correct.
Yeah, and, um, you, I've, I've got along you, I've got along with you since then, I've known you, boy, became good friends, and, uh, share a little bit back, uh, because, uh, well, I'm gonna go back and do a bit more, even if you, because, uh, you're alumni. And I didn't realize, you were a wrestler, you wrestled for U N M.
I did, I was fortunate to have a scholarship.
Yeah, so, uh, talk, tell me about that story about, uh, a state champion. Uh, no, a scholarship man without a state championship, it's anonymous, you said? Tell us that story about your wrestling career.
So people often are curious about that, how does a kid that never took state in high school end up on a D one team, a division one team on scholarship? And so really, it's, it's very simple, uh, not secure, first of all, let me just say, I didn't start wrestling till I was a junior. The first match I ever had was a junior in high school, and so clearly, that doesn't look promising to be a D one wrestler, right? And so when I graduated from high school, I had this, I had acquired this deep love of wrestling because it had really been transformative for me, I was, I was now, you know, doing well in school, I had friends, it really changed my life, and now I'm in, I'm in, I'm in college. So I, uh, didn't take state, so I go over to the, to the wrestling room and I meet the wrestling coach, Ron Jacobson. And I asked coach, said, "Coach, uh, are you allowing walk-ons?" And he says, uh, "No, not really, how'd you do in, in high school? Did you take state?" I said, "No, no, never took state." Uh, I did take some tournaments and, and one of the tournaments that I took was, uh, your U N M takedown tournament, which was a huge tournament, uh, schools would come from all over the country to compete. In fact, when I was a senior, there were forty-seven kids in my bracket alone, and I took first. So I think he was impressed somewhat with that, J C, so he let me walk on. And so I was there for about three months, I was working at the main city library, and I had to work because I didn't have a scholarship of any type outside of financial aid for college. And they were having two-a-days-around Christmas, and I called up coach, I said, "Coach, I'm not gonna be able to make this afternoon's practice." Uh, is that okay? He goes, "No, no problem," goes, "Pick up your stuff, you're off the team." So he let me walk on, and then suddenly I was off the team, I, okay, well, you know, easy come, easy go, right? I, I had to worry about school, I had to work.
Yeah.
And so one, one of the things that happened in that path was that I, I hooked up with a group of other wrestlers that were kind of like me, never particularly successful in high school, but really hungry for it, really loved the sport. So we started to travel to all the freestyle tournaments that we could. So if there was enough money for gas, we'd get in my buddy Joe's car and off we were to some tournament. We traveled as far as Louisiana and California, we were wrestling anywhere we could get to a tournament. And so I was getting better and better at wrestling in freestyle and, which is similar to collegiate wrestling or folk style, as they call it now, and I was getting better and better. And so the nineteen seventy-six Olympics were gonna roll around, and we went to the Olympic Regionals. And so they was run by A A U at that time. And so I took first in that tournament. And so I, I, at the same time, I dislocated my shoulders, so I couldn't go on to the national tournament, which would that have placed you on the Olympics? But, uh, U N M, Coach Jacobson, some of the boys were there, the trainers were there, they couldn't call themselves U N M, but they were there competing. And so Coach Jacobson was watching me wrestle in this tournament and even defeat an opponent with a dislocated shoulder. And I will always be appreciative of Coach Jacobson because he actually had his trainer go check me out, even though I wasn't part of their group. And the trainer said, "Art, you're done, you can't wrestle, you have a dislocated shoulder." And I said, "Oh, no, I'm gonna finish this match," and I went out there, one move, I pinned this guy. Loveland, Colorado, kids, the kid was from Loveland, so after that tournament was over, Coach Jacobson came over to me, he said, "Art, can I have a word with you?" And I said, "Sure, Coach." He said, "How would you like to be a Lobo?" I said, "I would love that, I would love that." He said, "I can get you a full ride," that's how I became a D one wrestler, nothing to do with high school, it was all
A U tournaments.
The morphing that happened and the improvement that happened because of the love and, I guess, some natural ability that I had that allowed me to be good enough. Now, I don't want people to get the impression that I was like the best wrestler at U N, because I certainly never was. But I think it's an inspirational story, particularly for young people, know that although you may be somewhat handicapped because you can't be a, a club ball player or a, uh, I'm not gonna call it a club wrestler, but you may not have the means to travel everywhere to do that. And I certainly didn't have that opportunity, I was able to gain that later. So if you love something enough and you work hard enough, you'd be amazing what you can do.
Yeah, and you went along and competed and you graduated, got your degree in, uh, U N M, and, uh, and, uh, and what did you get your degree in?
So I have a, uh, Bachelor's of University Studies, which was kind of a general, uh, later on I got a Master's. But one of the things that I want to say is that I really, uh, want to do a shout out to Coach Jacobson and the Lobos that were with me at that time, that we were on the same team. One of my good friends is Gary Hines, I don't know if you know Gary?
I know Gary, yeah.
Yeah, so we were on the team, and by the way, Gary was an amazing wrestler, a lot better than I ever was. But you know, what I will tell you, J C, is that, that I was fortunate to have this experience that allowed me to get some education, I met my wife at U N M at that time, uh, Annette, and so, you know?
A lot of good things came out of that, yeah.
It was, it was a blessing.
Gary Stripes, right, Gary, the Stripes, the old, um, Twisters, uh, yeah, yeah, good man, he big Lobo man, big Lobo guy, Lobo guy.
I reached out to, to let him know I was running for office now, and so he was like really excited about it, just a good friend.
Yeah, I could see that, you know, yeah, so, okay, so when, uh, we see you graduated from college and, um, I think, uh, you were saying that you've been with the county for, you retired from the county, but how long did you work for the county and how did you get in the county?
So, you know, being an athlete, I need, I was looking for a segue into helping people, and so that segue for me was to recreation, you know, when you're a bit of an athlete, that kind of lends itself to that. So I ended up in the field of recreation, uh, first as a, as, as a rec leader and at U N M, actually, I was a rec leader at U N M. Then I was, um, a, a lifeguard at, uh, for the city of Albuquerque. And so that took me on a, on a trajectory, a path towards, you know, being in that, uh, as a career, and that's what happened. I had a career first as, as a lifeguard, then a pool manager, then aquatics program manager, and then on to be director. And so when I got to be director, that's when I really particularly appreciated my job because it created opportunity to help families and children particularly. And so during my time, we not only built community centers for Burlington County, but we also created literacy programs. Uh, after school, before school programs that would help parents and children, because we were always.
You as a director could, we do, could do that.
We could do that, so we, we were able to help many families and children because, you know, parents need a place for their kids to be. You want to give them a wholesome, uh, somewhat of an educational, uh, uh, area to be in, and so we were able to do that. And so I really appreciated that, that I was able to do that for a fair amount of time, I was director for fourteen years. And by the way, I met you during that time, J C, if you remember.
I remember some of it, no, yeah, no, you know, share how you met me, let me get, how you appreciate, you know, we all have our own.
So one of the great things that we did, we also did sports. We, one of the things we created during that time that I was there was the East-West Almetory All-Stars Basketball. And so your son.
Yeah, Jeremy, yeah.
Jeremy was quite the athlete, and he was able to play on one of those teams, I think the West Side team.
Yeah, the West, yeah.
And, and.
No, it was the East, we were Sandia, I had him on Sandia, I had him at Sandia High School, yeah.
He was in the East, but the point was that we created this venue for these top athletes to compete one more time and represent their side of town, if you will.
Right.
And so during that time is when I met you, and so it's been friends ever since.
Yeah, so you had your office down on Lomas, I remember walking in there one, one time, yeah, so, yeah. Because, um, and then as, uh, as, as you retired, you know, then you started running for politics, you got involved, you became our county commissioner down in the South Valley.
Well, just a little detour to that, so I actually was an instructor at, at C N M for a time, I taught intro to business classes, I really appreciated that, then I worked, went to work for, uh, the mayor, Mayor Marty at the time, and, and I was deputy director at Solid Waste. Then I decided to run for office. And, and, and by the way, J C, running for office was an extension for me and for, for my wife, uh, an extension of public service, so I'd spent, uh, a lifetime of career up to that point as a public servant, and being an elected official was just simply an extension of that and a different way to be able to help community.
Mm-hmm, and you were a commissioner for eight years, right?
I was.
Yeah, that's, uh, you'd still be there if there wasn't term limit, right, more likely? Sorry, Stephen, but yeah, guess what it is?
So, yeah, you know, uh, I was able to do the two terms that we were allowed, and I, I hope that I left my community a little bit better than I found it, and, and I hope that people feel the same way, I think they do.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, it was, it was, it was a need to be able to do that.
Nice, well, let's, uh, let's talk about your new, uh, venture that you're gonna be coming to, talk a little bit about, um, you're gonna be running for the House legislature, and, uh, just explain how that, this process is gonna be for, it's different, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, J C, yes, so, uh, we've decided to run for, uh, state representative, for a state representative position, District Twelve. Uh, it's a little unusual because the incumbent is not seeking reelection for some technicalities that I'm not clear of, but that being said, uh, I will be on the ballot, J C, as a write-in candidate, okay? So that's a bit of a challenge, uh, and our, our mission is going to be to let the voter know that I will be electable, but my name will not appear on the ballot.
Not on the ballot.
So what the, what the voter will see is a little rectangular box that says "Write-In Candidate", and they're gonna have to remember to write some version of my name, so De La Cruz is the best way, right, to spell out the whole name, De La Cruz. But if they forget just how to spell it, they could put Cruz and it would be acceptable. They could write Art and it would be acceptable, so the main thing is that we want people to, to attempt, because the way the law reads is as long as it's clear what the, the voter's intent was, it will qualify. Now granted, we want people to be able to spell it, but they should not be deterred, like some, "De La Cruz is an odd name, I don't know how to spell that." Spell it as best as you can.
Right, right, okay, and, um, has anybody ever won on a write-in candidate?
I believe that there was a congressional candidate, and don't quote me, I, well, I'm being quoted. But I believe that it was a congressional race, and if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I'm sure your viewers will correct it, but I believe it was Joe Skim.
Joe Skim, oh, you know what, I think you might be right, huh, I think I remember that, yeah, when you said that, yeah.
But I will tell you, J C, if we win this seat, we will be making record because nobody has won the House that way before.
And you're, and you're running as a Democrat.
Exactly.
Even though you're writing, but you're a Democrat, you're a very proud Democrat, I understand that, you know?
Which, by the way, I'm very happy that my community, District Twelve, is heavily Democratic, but we welcome everybody to support me.
Yeah, 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 so, and, uh, and a lot of good Republicans out there too, in the South Valley, you know, and they're, they're all good people out there.
And independents.
Independent, too, I'm one, I'm an independent, you know, so people say, "Why independent?" because I know too many people outside. You know, so, and, uh, what are your, um, what's your goals, what's your plan when you're elected?
Well, let me tell you, day one, we do have an agenda, one of the big things that I really want to work on, particularly for seniors. Now, how doable it is, working with the legislature, you know, my colleagues, if I get there, the governor, I would like to find a place where we can, uh, not tax senior citizens for their property if they've lived in their home for twenty years and own their home. So if there's, if they qualify as seniors, I believe at sixty-five and older, that's one of the big ones. Secondly, for young people, I think this is critical, I would like us to find a way to be able to, as a state organization, to loan to our higher, to our higher ed students college loans, so right now, the, the interest is very, very high, so you, you go and you get your, your doctorate, you become a lawyer, doctor, whatever happens to be. You are saddled with amazing debt, and the debt by itself is significant, but then you add the interest and it's, it's just almost insurmountable for people. I'd like us to be able to provide grants and loans to our higher ed students at zero or maybe one percent. And the reason that I think we can do this is because right now, we give businesses grants, like the LEEDA grant, the Local Economic Development Grant.
Right.
And, and, and businesses don't have to pay that back. So it's a grant for business, why can't we do a grant or a loan to our higher ed students? So we're gonna, we're gonna explore that, I think that's critical. Secondly, I want to create, if you imagine a three-one-one for parents and school districts to help our students that are disadvantaged. If, if you're homeless or you need some other kind of, of food assistance, uh, meal assistance. I would like to have a place, a one-stop shop in state government where families can call, local school districts can call and get help for our disadvantaged students. Imagine this, if you're in the city of Albuquerque and you want to find out something or you want to report something, what do you call?
Three-one-one.
You call three-one-one, I would like to have some version of that that would create a case that then would connect people to the services that, that they need. So that's just a small sample of things that I want to work on, but we have a whole, people can visit my Facebook page, which is Art De La Cruz for State Representative, District Twelve, and we have our platform there.
Say it one more time.
It is, you can visit our Facebook page at Art De La Cruz for State Representative, District Twelve, and you can see the platform, there's a lot of great information there.
Okay, uh, like, for example, you mentioned about no property tax for people that are, that pay, that only have their house paid off only? Because what if I'm sixty-five and I still own my house, I can't qualify for it?
You would not qualify, J C, I'm sorry, you, you, you'd have to own your home.
Own it, yeah.
You'd have to be of the right age, and we want to, I would like to see us give our, you know, we often talk about children being our, our, our future resource, and they absolutely are. But you know, our seniors are too.
That's right.
They have a history, they have wisdom that we need to appreciate, and part of that appreciation I believe is to give something tangible back to them.
Thanking them for doing great.
And alleviating them of some of that tax, but by the way, many of our seniors are not wealthy people, as you know.
Right, right, yeah, I know my, my sister and brother-in-law, I know they probably, they sold their house, and I know they're over sixty-five, but they would benefit them not having to pay property tax.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and because in reality, you might have your house paid off, but if you don't pay your taxes, they'll take it away, right?
Right, right, and I, and I, and I recognize that our state and, and our local jurisdictions, they have a need for revenue because they put, they have great services, like if we create three-one-one for, for some version of three-one-one for our kids, so.
And who would fund that?
So that's, that's a great point, so where do you, uh, how do you now find that?
Find the money, yeah.
Find that money, so I, being a, a lifetime government employee, then an elected official, I can tell you that there are always efficiencies of governor, of government. You have to rearrange what you fund and to what level you fund it. So working perhaps with not only the legislature, but the governor, uh, and, and of course, the senators, I believe that those efficiencies, efficiencies can be found and that we can rearrange what we fund.
Because there's a lot of capital outlay money, right, that that could be, some of it could be used for something like that, now, that's good ideas.
So that, that needs to certainly be explored, but I believe that it's worth exploring.
Right, 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 and, uh, and, um, what else, um, just elaborate more, like what else do you see in the horizons that you can help, you know, in New Mexico or the South Valley?
Oh, it, it, it's almost endless, right? One of the things that I have to share with you about the district that I serve, that I served as a commissioner and that I will serve as a state representative, it's, it's the South Valley. I can tell you that our roads still need repair, now, we have great elected officials, I don't want to, I don't want to say anything that, that, that they wouldn't feel good about, but nonetheless, they, they all have the same challenges that I will have if I get there, and that is to make sure that we have great infrastructure, that we have lights, so that our, our streets aren't dark at night, so that our roads don't have any more potholes than, than are necessary, that we have water, that we have sewer. Much of the area still is without some of the basic things that most Americans, most Albuquerqueans enjoy. We want them, we want to do better, so infrastructure is a big one.
It's come a long way, when you were the, the commissioner, then with Stephen Casada, now with commissioner, you guys together have done a lot, you know, you know, to help each other, I, I've seen that, I remember that growing up, not growing up, I don't know. Right. When I see you guys, you know, working hard, because Stephen does a good job out there, you know, Stephen Michael, you know, he's really, he, he, he's like you. He's an activist, but he cares about his community, you know, and that's what, that's what's nice, if you can, that's why you're running, you don't need to run. You're kind of, you're happy with your, with your hat, I know, yeah, so.
It's, it's, it's a lifetime of service, and I think we could still do a little bit more, but certainly the job's not done. I mean, we all, as, as a former elected official and, and with our current elected officials, there's much to be done. It doesn't get done in eight years, we're probably talking next fifty years.
Yeah, uh, anybody that's out there watching, that's, uh, that, if you want to text, uh, a question for Art, text me a question and I'll, you know, I'll ask, I'll ask Art the question, and that way we can, um, you know, continue. Anyway, let's go back, we'll go back to the, let me ask a little bit about, um, I remember meeting you a long time ago too, during the time is, uh, my son J D worked with you, you know, tell me your, your, what you remember about my, with J D, about what we're talking about, you know?
So, so former director of parks and rec.
Yeah.
Uh, it wasn't my creative genius, but we had a staff of Yvette Grego, who thought of this great concept of creating a dance, a wholesome dance event with positive messages for youth. And so it ultimately became a super popular dance TV show that, so you could go to the beach water park, enjoy a great dance, great music, lots of entertainment. Then on Saturday of the fall, and the next week, you could see yourself on television. And so we had quite a bit of talent, we not only had the kids, the youth that were part of the program as what they were called. VJs at the time, right? And so we were always looking for talent, uh, either with sound or, or sound production or, or, or music production. And your son, which I didn't know was your son at the time.
Right, right.
Was part of that talent, that ability to produce, and so, uh, his production helped the show.
Yeah, because I remember his dance, 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 and, you know, and, uh, speaking of J D, and I brought him up, is that J D right now has a, uh, a new company that he's trying to open up, it's called Jungle Jam. It's on the west side on, uh, Coors and, um, and, um, Paseo. It's the old Sears building and right down, and, uh, and, uh, Jungle Jam cannot open because of this pandemic. You know, we're, we're like going through like, ah, you know, Mini Man, we're busy, Jungle Jam, you know, and it's ready to rock, and, um, and one thing I want to share with everyone out there and, uh, with our here is that tomorrow at, uh, at ten fifty, I believe, he's gonna be interviewed on K O B, K, K, K O B, uh, radio? Because, um, his, his company is in the finalist to, uh, to receive that, um, marketing dollars that K O B had promotion, you know, so everybody out there, you know, uh, you'll, you'll hear about it with Jungle Jam, but that's, you know, my son J D's company that, uh, they need, they, they ain't gonna need, I think the, the, um, the award is fifty thousand dollars in marketing and advertising. So this is a great coup, so everybody out there, you know, if you gotta vote, I think it's gonna be a vote. So everybody get out there and vote for Jungle Jam, you know, because it's gonna be pretty, you know, I'm excited for him, you know, hopefully we can open. For the kids, you know, these kids, you know, kids are, are, they're, they're suffering inside their houses, they want to get out. And then it's not, you know, so hopefully the future, you know, hopefully the governor can look at those numbers and say, "Okay, it's time." I'm waiting for that time to happen, yeah.
Well, I remember J D, he was a great kid, uh, promising young man, so I'm glad, glad, glad to hear he's doing great.
He did great, uh, yeah, he became an entertainment attorney, so, you know, but he don't want to practice a lot no more, so this is, this is entertainment, you know, that's what he wants to do. Yeah, so, no, I, I remember Art, you know, you know, you mind me asking how old you are? Do people want to know how old you are?
Oh, I don't mind at all, I'm a youthful sixty-three.
Are you sixty-three? Well, I think, good, looking good, uh, yeah, so, uh, so you never, when do you think, um, so if you run, you win, you'll win, I, I can't see you not winning, I mean, honestly, me, Art, that's good. How long do you want to, how long do you want to be in the legislature? You looking down for ten years, are you looking long-term?
You know, I don't, I don't have a horizon at this moment, you know, it might be two years, ten years, I'm not sure, you know? Part of it is, is knowing that I can contribute and that I feel good and that, that, that I'm successful at contributing because I don't want to be an elected official just to occupy space. I want to be an elected official that is genuinely delivering for the community on multiple levels. And the legislature, it isn't only infrastructure and it isn't only programs, it has, you know, the educational system. It's part of the legislature and how they get funded and the formula, it's a very complex system, so I don't want to, you know, make it seem simplistic.
Right.
So that being said, if I can feel that I am contributing on the complex variety that is necessary, and I hope to do it as long as possible, and I don't know what that looks like, J C.
Right, right, um, what's the boundaries, what is the boundaries for the, the district?
I'm glad that you asked that question, so I, I'm pretty much the heart of the South Valley, if you will. Uh, the lines of demarcation to the south is a road called Gun Club, so it starts on the southern border.
Gun Club, okay.
Heads up the middle valley, I don't cross the river to the east, I stay on the valley floor, heading north. And it has some weird jogs, I'm not gonna try to describe all of the jogs, but roughly it goes up to the north on, on Sage and a street called Rosendo Garcia.
Oh, that's that, okay, okay, that Sage runs up to West Gate?
Right, that's my northern boundary, and, and the, the west side area, I do take up everything east of Unser, so I don't go into the old West Gate area, but I do take up the newer, lower, east of Unser.
Okay, like Tower, I mean, what's that, all those, Arinat, all those, yeah, okay, okay. There's your, so you're coming this way Gun Club, okay, so you're not deep by Dennis Chavez or, yeah, or Caesar Chavez?
I do go up, uh, uh, Dennis Chavez Boulevard, it actually goes to the west.
By Trisco Valley? I mean, I mean, uh, what's that school, Trisco?
Heritage.
Heritage, are you part of that, is that your area?
So, no, yes and no, yes and no, so I do go up Dennis Chavez to Ninety-Eighth Street, but I don't go all the way to the high school, so the community's.
Ninety-eighth though?
Yes, up to Ninety-Eighth, so I, I have this kind of jog up to Ninety-Eighth and taking some of those newer homes on the west side. But that's the only exception that I go past Unser, otherwise I am east of Unser.
Right, and are you walking a lot, are you, are you walker, do you like, do you enjoy that?
I'm a walker, jogger, but so when, we, now, we, we, we will do some of that with masks, social distancing, but I, you know, I, I feel that it's my obligation to meet the voter and that the voter meet me. That if they have questions of me, that they can talk to me, that they can see me. Everything I produce, I put my personal cell, J C, so when you get a piece of literature and there's a number on there.
That's you.
It's me, and I've had that same cell for twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, um, do you feel, uh, do you feel good?
I feel fantastic.
You're healthy, you're very, very good, yeah, you look good, yeah, you look good, like you're.
I try to stay as active as possible and, and I, I just thank God that I'm in good health.
Yeah, yeah, is there, um, if anybody wants to donate to your campaign, where, where can they send a check to or what, what do you, how's that?
Well, I appreciate you asking, that's a great question, because, you know. Well, I appreciate you asking. That's a great question because, you know, we do need help. So if, if people go to my Facebook, Art De La Cruz for State Representative, uh, there is a link called Act Blue. And if you go to Act Blue, you can donate any amount that you feel comfortable with. And by the way, the little amounts matter. So please, if you are watching this and you would like to contribute to our campaign, please go to Art De La Cruz for State Representative and find the link to Act Blue.
Right on. That's, that, you know, we'll, we'll donate, we'll all donate. It's, it's good. You know, it's good to, uh, do what you're doing, you know. And, uh, you got two more months? Or when is the election?
Well, the election is November 3rd. However, early voting starts, I believe, and I think I'm correct when I say it's first of October. So early voting, absentee voting start first of October.
When you do absentee voting, you know, and they send for it. So when you get their packet, that's also a place to write your name. So they got to make sure that, you know, don't put a circle on somebody's name, just write, write the name.
Right. So for you, what, what, what people will see is state representative, District 12, and then it'll have it in Spanish as well. And you will not see Art De La Cruz. What you will see is a rectangular box in a, in a bubble. So people will need to color the bubble.
They do got to color that bubble. Not just write your name.
Right. Color the bubble and put De La Cruz. But it's kind of self-explanatory if people just remember that they won't see the name, but a box.
Yeah, even though that's self-explanatory, that's still different. I mean, that people get it, you know, they get really like, okay, I know it's common sense, right? But yeah, sometimes like, I don't see his name and they leave it alone. They go, I bought it for you.
So that's why we're called the Write-In Candidate.
Write-In Candidate, the Write-In Candidate, you know, that's Art De La Cruz. Yeah. Um, tell me a little bit about, uh, your family. Tell me what's going on with your family.
Well, thank you for asking. You know, my wife Annette is a CNM board member and that keeps her pretty busy. By the way, shout out CNM. They do a great job for our students on multiple levels. And so they have a great new president, uh, of the college. Uh, I appreciate CNM on another level because I was a former instructor there and I know that the staff is so dedicated and wonderful. And then they have, uh, the programs that I think meet the need of our students. But that being said, so she's busy with that. And of course I have ultra busy helping on this campaign. So, sorry, Annette.
Do, do you have a, a campaign manager or no?
We actually have, uh, I, it's like a, a group of, of several that are at the top that help. So we don't have a single point person. I kind of like to do it with a, with a, with a small group that we all kind of bounce ideas and move forward.
So being that your challenge, it's a challenge, uh, I, I still think that writing candidate is a challenge because people get used to doing it a certain way. So what are you doing any different to let these people know, write in, write in? I mean, what's the, what are you doing for that? Cause you gotta put it deep in there. It's automatic. Giving them a pencil, a pen, I mean.
Right. So J C, being here is part of that promotion, right? To let people know, to educate. And, and yes, there's, we're going to be looking to do have some giveaways, like pencils that say, remember to write in, right? So that's part of it. All the literature, all the promotion that we do is, is, is focused around the idea that you have to remember to write De La Cruz. So hopefully we do a competent job of that and at the end of the day, we'll be fine. I think we will be fine.
Yeah, yeah. So, um, and, uh, so do you work seven days a week? And you do, you do seven days a week?
It's seven days a week. It, you know, it's an important job. And if you don't take it, uh, with the, with, in the, put it in the context that's necessary of how important it is, then you're not first going to prevail if you're a candidate. But for us, it isn't just that we're a candidate. We also know the importance of the job. And I believe that what we can do, and I hopefully, uh, our community agrees, uh, is important enough that we work hard at it and we will do that to the very end. There is, there will be no slacking, J C. And you know, former wrestler, wrestlers never give up. My putts on our back, but then we're going to turn you over. So we're going to go all the way to the end and we're going to work hard. You'll be tireless at it.
Yeah. No, I remember, uh, when I first met you, no, I met you, I'll tell you about, I, when I see you during the years, I learned something about you every time. You know, it's like, even when I knew you then, I never knew you were a wrestler. Till I, till I think I saw you at the U N M alumni. You were like, you were there and I go, you know, I was, I'm not an alumni, but I'm not an athlete, you know, but I was like, being involved. And you were, you wrestled with Gary Heinz, like you say, and I remember, I remember the wrestling team back then. I remember when they canceled, they were the, they got rid of that too. You guys were tough, man. You, you know, it was tough, you know.
It was heartbreaking. Yes. You know, by the way, a little shout out to wrestling. One of the things that I appreciate personally, J C, even today, you know, yeah, I've gotten fatter, but you know, I'm not a big guy. And I certainly wasn't a big guy there. I was the smallest guy on the team. I was 118 pounds at U N M. And, and that was the lowest weight. At Rio, when I was wrestling for Rio Grande High School, I was 112. Uh, and so I'm not a big guy. Guys like me typically aren't going to get scholarships to compete. And so, uh, that's what I always liked about wrestling. You had the big boys to the heavyweight and then you had the little guy like me. And so scholarships all the way through. And so, you know, I, I think that was a loss for our state.
Oh, yeah, yeah. You know, when I, growing up here, being a big global fan that I am, and I seen like when they lost gymnastics too. And they were national power too. So, you know, watch out, all U N M athletics, you become a national power. That might be your, uh, your death sentence. Cause gymnastics, soccer, you know, feel bad for Coach Fishby, you know, but, you know, there's more beyond that. Well, we know, you know, we're just fans, you know, we, we, we don't know what's behind the scenes, you know, so, yeah. But I know this is exciting, you know, Art, uh, when I, you know, heard that you, you know, you were running as a, as a writing, I could figure it out. Go, well, how come he's not on the, then you explained to me that it was like the last minute, you know what, I'm going to do it. Get it done. Yeah. So interesting. Yeah. So. Um, you got any questions that you might want to ask or about anything, you know?
Well, first of all, J C, before we sign off, I want to thank you for letting me part, be part of your podcast, uh, be with your viewers. I do ask everybody for their vote on November 3rd. If you live in District 12, State Representative, uh, and wish as well. You know, we need all the prayers and, and help we can get.
And I want to share this with everyone out there that, uh, I've known Art a long time. I, you know, I give him a, I hit thumbs up, uh, you know, I, I only like to support people that I know that are hard workers. And Art is a hard worker and an honest, ethical man. Uh, if you've got any questions, you know, uh, you know, I got a little secret about him. I'm going to say that. I'm just kidding. No, Art's a good man. Um, he's an honest man. So if you, on the side of who you want to vote for, just vote for Art De La Cruz. You know, uh, and I guarantee you that he'll do what, uh, what's right. You know, so. Uh, so Art, we can continue talking about whatever you want to talk about or, you know, we can wrap it or whatever you want to do back. Cause this is fun, you know, so. You want to talk a little bit about, um, Lobal Athletics? What do you think about football?
Oh gosh, you know, this pandemic has changed the entire landscape, you know. Uh, just a little side note, by the way, talking about football, for over 20 years, I was a ticket taker for Lobal Football. Now, it wasn't a job back then. It was really just so that we would get to see some of the football game. Now it's become a job if you're a ticket taker, but back then it was, it was all educators that were involved. And, and I loved every year when football season rolled around because I knew I was going to get to watch some great football. And I wouldn't have to pay to watch. And I had to go take some tickets for a little while, but it, you know, I loved doing that. And so I have kind of this love for football, Lobal Football, that's a little different because of that, that experience that I enjoyed. So I missed when they changed the system. It became more of a job. I didn't want a job. I just wanted to see a little bit of football.
Right. I remember growing, my dad should take me to the games younger and my dad knew all these guys do it. They were, like you say, they were, uh, educated or, or, or the Optimist Club at one time, I think Optimus, somebody was, they had, had, you know, not hired, but they were, you know. Um, did you, um, what did you, have you met Danny Gonzalez?
You know, I haven't.
You have not met Danny?
I have not met any of the new folks. I'm, I'm excited. I think he has an, an amazing background and I think it's going to be great for, for athletics and, and yeah, so football, I'm sorry.
Yeah. You know, he's a good man. I had him on the show, you know, about a month ago, a month and a half ago. And, uh, you know what? We just gotta just play, huh? We just like, you know, we want to, even now, as a fan, they say fans that might not go. I'm okay with that for now, you know, but they gotta stay, they gotta start playing, you know, they gotta start playing. Um, you know, even we, hopefully maybe there's a TV package or maybe we'll, uh, you know, what's it, uh, rent a, uh, uh, one of them little platforms and we'll go, we'll just get a little bit of color and we can watch.
You know, J C, maybe they can follow the model of what some of the sport, uh, the professional teams are going to do, or maybe fans can't watch it live. Because one of the things that I have to share, we have to get well. Our country got to get past this pandemic. We've got to get people well and, and get back to normal. But until we can do that, I'm okay like you. I'm okay that we, you know, it has to be life a little different.
Yeah. Yeah. And, um, you know, like, uh, I, I, I'm confused a lot because I noticed I'm seeing that, uh, United's playing. Uh, no fans, but they're playing. So I hope that, um, that, that will continue the trend, you know. The governor can say, okay, go and play, but no fans, you know, give something back, you know, cause, uh, you know, you, you need to continue some, some of it. Not, not all some, you gotta do some.
Well, I'll tell you what, J C, I wouldn't want to be in the governor's shoes right now. It's tough, you know, it's just a tough, tough thing. I think job one is to keep people alive.
Keep them safe, no? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, a few, uh, about a month ago, I lost a friend to the COVID, you know, he got it in Phoenix. And, uh, he came home and he got sick and he lasted two weeks and he passed away. They may, it brought it home, it brought it home. Like it could happen to any one of us along, you know. So always just be careful, wear a mask, wash your hands, social distancing, you know, so just everybody keep doing what they're doing. Even if you don't believe it, just do it, you know, you know.
I have my mask right here.
Yeah. And I got, I got my mask. I can't, I can't wear though because I'm a baboon. I can't, I was all over, I spit, you know, all over my mask, you know, so it's like having a time. Yeah. So, well, I want to thank you for coming. Um, you know, we'll do it again, you know, if we do it one more time before the election, if you know, we're welcome to come do that. This is fun. Uh, we have a good time. We're here at the Cogan Water Store called Hydro Bar with Tim Baca. Uh, where is Tim? Tim, are you out there? Yeah. Tim Baca has created a little, um, and the water's good. I mean, it's an alkaline water. And, uh, we've been drinking it and, um, I, and again, the machine from my home, I have my wife with her, with her, uh, with her, um, come here. Uh, I want to, I want to get Tim here on my spot for right now. I want to talk to him because you guys have some history and I want you guys to share a little bit of, uh. Oh, come on. Okay, go ahead.
I wish I could.
Okay, go ahead. All right.
And I'm the only one here.
Oh, he's working hard. Okay. Well, well, guess we can do Tim another time. Yeah. So, um, well, that was then, from that, with that said, I guess, uh, time to go and, uh, thank you all for coming, uh, for watching. And, uh, again, we'll do it again soon. Um, I got a special guest next week, I think. I'm going to get him. So it'll be a surprise, but, uh, we'll, we'll get to go in here. Uh, thank you again, Art.
Thank you, J C.
Tim, thank you.
Thank you.
Hydro Bar, Cogan Water, 7400 Montgomery. Be here, the best water in the world. True, true. True, true. Tim?